All right. Thank you for understanding on our technical difficulty. We will call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of March 21st, 2022 to order. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank. Frank is absent. Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Prather. Prather is absent. Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Okay, if you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance standing and followed by the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our right that we have earned to assemble here this evening. We thank you for our country. We thank you for our community and for our freedoms. We ask that you be with the men and women that currently serve in our military and the many veterans who have served fighting for the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank you for their service and for their sacrifice. We also ask that you be with our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout this country. We ask that you give us tonight, as we conduct our city's business, the wisdom, patience, courage, and compassion as we face the issues of the city here this evening. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. Okay, item number three, under public comment, we have Mr. John Albertini. Hi, John. Welcome. Come on up. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is John Albertini. I live at 506 Park Avenue in Belvidere, Illinois. I just wanted to first start out this meeting by congratulating Chief Heiser on his well-deserved retirement and his 27 years of service on the fire department. Thank you very much. Okay, I just wanted to bring a couple of things quick to the council's attention. This past month in March, we lost two restaurants in my community on U.S. Grand Highway. We lost De Cellos and Grandma's. Yes, she closed. She's, you know, where I'm talking about countryside, she closed. She is on her phone. If you call now, she thanks everybody for, you know, coming and servicing at her restaurant, but they did close. They're out of business. That's two restaurants in one month. What I would like to do is if we can figure out somehow, and I know it's not up to us, it's not up to the landlords, but if we could try to fulfill putting restaurants back in these locations before they're golfed up for something else like RP lumber. I expected a food store there, not a lumber store, but, you know, who cares? But if we could keep restaurants there, that would be nice. We have very little to eat on the south side of Belvidere. If we could find a way of soliciting somebody to come there, why there are still restaurants, it might be advantageous to them before the owners gut them and turn them into just empty squares until they're leased. So it's just something for the board to look at and maybe it's in Clayton's and Porter's area that maybe they know somebody or something they can do about it. It'd be really grateful for my people that live by me. They like somewhere to go eat instead of having to go all the way to Rockford or the other end of Belvidere. So if there's something we could do, I would appreciate it. Anybody have any questions? I'll take any questions. Okay, good. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. Counsel, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, item number four on the agenda, item 4A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of March 7th, 2022, as presented. Could we have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Mahal. Any discussion, any corrections regarding those minutes? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor, will when, actually, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And under item five, public hearing, we have none. Special messages and proclamations. We did have Pam Lopez Fettis at Growth Dimensions on the agenda here this evening, but I understand that she had a family issue, so she will not be joining us. We have under item B, the Idaho Public Library and the library budget, and Wendy? Or who is going to present that? Hi, Daniel. You're not Wendy. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be presenting the budget for the Idaho Public Library. We made a pie chart, and also behind the pie charts, every line item we have, if you see in the line items, if you see R, if you're wondering, it means restricted. Restricted means we can only utilize it what it's been allocated as. We cannot use it for any other fund. I don't know if you guys have any questions, because the big pie is, the majority of the budget is for staff wages, as most of any government body. A lot of it goes to the wages and insurance. And a lot of that, then after that, is allocated rest of it to the services provided. If you look on the bottom of the pie chart where it says other, it also divides it up to specific items where it's breaking it down to even more expenditures we have at the library. We did our due diligence of cutting the, we cut off the skin. We're back down to the bones. Can't, we did a fair job of going it over and over the budget, and this is the, we came to present to the council.
Okay, Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. So Danny, it looks to me like your total income, $896.250, and your total expenses, $896.250, so you have a balanced budget?
We do have a balanced budget.
I'm just a little confused on the last page, total income and then the mortgage. What is that?
If I recall right, I think they were putting money that was going to the rent into the general budget, which shouldn't have been going to the budget. It should have been going to its separate fund for the mortgage. So that's why it's looking a little bit higher than it should be when it's already been allocated to, paying off the mortgage and rent of the church and the house from the library. You're welcome.
Excuse me. Is there any other questions for Mr. Rivel? Alderman Porter?
Yeah, what was this on the first pie chart here? It says rent, church, and hurl, but what is that?
Right next to the library, if they see the church, it's, the library owns the church, like the property, and the church pays the library for the rent.
I'm just curious how much your wages went up due to the minimum wage increase for this next year? Did you have a number that shows how much they went up?
Trying to remember the budget increase. Do you remember, Mindy, or? $14,000 was increased for the increase of minimum wage.
Any questions, any other questions? I would, this is the first chance that we've had an opportunity to view this this evening, was when it was put on our desks here, so perhaps if you want to come next month, there might be some other questions regarding it. You're certainly welcome to come.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Under item seven, approval of expenditures, we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,241,243.57. Do we have a motion on the floor to accept those? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the general and special fund expenditures? Will, when their name is called, answer yes. Any opposed? No.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter. Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And then we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $361,537.84. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding the expenditures for the water and sewer fund? Seeing none. All those in favor of the water and sewer fund expenditures? Will, when their name is called, answer yes. Any opposed? No.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And moving on to item A, reports, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through H have been placed on file. And we have item I, minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works of March 14th, 2022. Do we have a motion to accept those as presented? Motion by Alderman McGee. Thank you. Second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion, any questions regarding those minutes? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And we have under nine, unfinished business, we have for a second reading here this evening, an ordinance, 567H, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, and that being our police canine dog, Shep. So... Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion regarding that? Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, will when their name is read, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Thank you. Motion passed. And under new business, number 10, we have item A, ordinance 568H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the planned business district located at 996 Belvidere Road. That is just a first reading, so that will be back. We have item B, also for a first reading, ordinance number 569H, an ordinance approving the replat titled Plat. Number 5 of Oak Brook Woods, and that's a first reading, as I said, and that will be back. Item C, ordinance 570H, is a first reading, an ordinance granting special uses to allow indoor sales or service, off-site parking lot, and vehicle repair and maintenance within the planned industrial district located at 6853 Indy Drive. That also will be back as it's a first reading. Item D, ordinance 571H, for a first reading, ordinance providing for the temporary relief from the full requirements of Section 98-12A.3 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code for the fiscal year 2023, from May 1st, '22 through 4/30th of 2023, and that is a first reading as well, and it will be back. We have resolution, item E, Resolution 2022-10, on the agenda this evening, a resolution directing the planning department to publish the zoning map of the city of Belvidere. We have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderwoman Mahal, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion regarding that, the resolution 2022 and the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, signify by saying yes. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And item F, moving next, Resolution 2022-11, resolution accepting the public improvements of Little Caesar's subdivision. Could we have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions regarding that resolution? All right, hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. When the clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Thank you. Motion passed. We have motions forwarded from the Committee of the Whole Building Planning and Zoning and Public Works of March 14th, 2022. motions out of finance and personnel. Chairman Rick Burden, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Alexandra Sandy Omnia-Tech to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending in May 2025.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion then on the floor. Is there any discussion regarding that motion out of committee? All right, all those in favor, will when their name is called, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. Chairman Burden, continue.
B, motion to authorize the mayor to execute such agreements and expend funds in the Heritage Days account, currently $36,955.37. Further, the mayor is authorized to execute such agreements and expend additional funds which are received as donation or contribution for the Heritage Days Festival and Heritage Days BBQ Showdown. Section 58-1-7 is abrogated for these purposes.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you, Chairman Burden. Motion's out of public works. Chairwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. C, motion to approve the proposal from Strand Associates in the amount not to exceed $48,750 to complete the engineering services required for the drilling of well number 11. This work will be paid for from the Water Plant Depreciation Fund.
Okay, we have the motion out of committee then. Is there any discussion regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. Continue, Chairwoman Freeman.
D, motion to approve the low bid from Pace Analytical Services for the groundwater monitoring at Belvidere Municipal Landfill Number 1 from July 2022 until August 2023 in the amount of $12,920.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Is there any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you.
E, motion to approve the low bid from Pace Analytical Services in the amount of $76,445.80 for the groundwater monitoring at Belvidere Municipal Landfill Number 2 for two years, beginning with the April 2022 sampling period.
Okay, we have a motion then out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion? Alderman Snow?
So again, Brent, this is split with the counties, so this dollar amount will be in half, or this is reflected half of that? No, that is the total amount of the contract. That'll be approved by both council and county board, and it's included in the number that we get from the county board for our share of cost for the operation and maintenance of the landfill number two.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, the huge discrepancy in the dollar amounts for these two landfills is because landfill number one is so much older, and we don't have to test for as many things, but we'll always have to test landfill at that amount or more. But landfill number two has to have a whole lot more sampling done.
That's correct. Landfill number one is, has been closed, and the closure's been accepted by the U.S. EPA. It's been delisted, but however, it is still considered landfill, so we have to do annual sampling, and it's, this is the least amount of sampling that we'll have to do, but we'll have to do it basically forever. Whereas in landfill number two is still in active remediation, so there's a lot more sampling points and a lot more parameters that we have to sample for while it's going through remediation, so eventually, at some point, it will get to where landfill number one is now.
Okay, any other questions for Brent? Or any other comments? Okay, we have a motion then to approve the low bid from Pace Analytical Services in the amount of $76,445.80 for the groundwater monitoring at Belvidere Municipal Landfill Number 2 for two years, beginning with the April 2022 sampling period. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you.
F, motion to approve the low bid from Globe Construction in the amount of $147,410 for the city's annual sidewalk program. The unit prices are $8.10 a square foot for removal and replacement of four-inch sidewalk, and $7.10 a square foot for removal and replacement of six-inch sidewalk. This work will be paid for from line item 01-5-310-6003 and line item number 41-5-110-7900.
Okay, we have a motion then out of committee. Is there any discussion or questions regarding that motion? Alderman Porter?
Just a quick question here. I was just curious, where are the four-inch sidewalks are used and where are the six-inch ones used?
Six inches, what's placed across the driveway. The remainder's placed at four-inch.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor will, when their name is called, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you.
G, motion to approve the low bid from Minahan's Tree Service in the amount of $48,400 for tree work from May 1st, 2022, to April 30th, 2023, for the city of Belvidere. This work will be paid for from forestry funds.
Okay, we have the motion out of committee. Is there any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you.
H, motion to approve the low bid from Lawn Maintenance Services in the amount of $21,775 for the 2022 landscape maintenance program. This work will be paid for from Street Department line items number 01-5-310-6002 and number 01-5-310-6826.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion? Any comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Yes.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you.
I, motion to approve the low bid from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of $420 per mowing for the mowing of Water Department sites. This work will be paid for from Water Department line item 61-5-810-6040.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion? Any comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you.
J, motion to approve the low bid from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of $800 per mowing for the mowing of the public work sites. This work will be paid from Street Department line item 01-5-310-6002.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion then out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that? Alder, Chairwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, what is the difference between Water Department sites and public work sites?
So public work sites would be all your Street Department General Fund, general public areas that were responsibly mowed. The Water Department sites are specifically around the wellhouses on Water Department property.
Okay, so that's why it's so much more expensive for the public work sites?
Yeah, there's a lot more areas to mow.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, the motion out of committee, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay. When the clerk calls a roll.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And K.
Finally, K, motion to approve the low bid from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of $225 per mowing for the Farmington ponds. This work will be paid from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Fund.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none, all those that are in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed, and that is all we have on the agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, thank you, and second by Alderman Porter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? Okay, we're adjourned at, for the record, 7:34 PM. Thank you.